I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The far exits are marked so by the exits. If there is an incident, you'll be notified from the podium. Please leave in an orderly fashion. And I'm going to ask your indulgences tonight and comments from the public at the end of the meeting instead of at the beginning of the meeting. There's some correspondence that may be pertinent to what two people are talking about, if you don't mind. With that, minutes of the previous meeting of regular March 6th and March 8th. Board, you all have copies. Is there any additions or deletions?
All those that we approved, the minutes as written?
Go ahead. Moved by trustee Penfield, certified by trustee Moore. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of "aye."
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, bills. You all have copies of the bills. Is there any addition or deletions, Arson?
We have one addition this evening. It's to Elon Planning and Design. It's invoice number 11, fee component due $4,023.
Need a motion?
I want the motions paying the bills as amended.
Second.
Moved by trustee Penfield, certified by trustee Moore. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
We have several items on the agenda, Mayor. And we have other pieces of correspondence that were just received, as some of them are late at 5:00 this evening. The first letter we have is a letter dated March 9th. It's from Northeastern Clinton Central School District. It's addressed to the mayor, Dear Mr. Rivers. Northeastern Clinton Central School District would like to request the use of the Rousas Point tennis courts located at the Civic Center. The requested time is going to be Monday through Friday from 3:00 to 5:15, beginning March 14th through May 31st, '06. The matches start the week of April 17th. We request that the wind screens be put up prior to that date if possible. Thank you for your support over the years, and it's signed sincerely, Josie Gilroy, Athletic Director.
Need a motion on that, Board? You want to add on it now?
I'd still use it.
Moved by trustee Moore, certified by trustee Burke. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The next letter we have is a letter addressed to the village clerk. It was received certified by certified mail. It's from Carolyn Reed, President of Sandy's Deli. This letter is to inform the clerk of the village of Rousas Point of Sandy's Deli, Inc., is submitting a renewal application for its on-premise beer license. The renewed license will become effective 5/106 and will be under the name Sandy's Deli, Inc., with a serial number of 2004156, and will expire April 30th, '09. Thank you for your time in this matter. We also received a certified letter from Montgomery Post, number 912. It's addressed to me as village clerk, dear Mr. Baharno. This letter is to advise the Rousas Point Village Board that American Legion Montgomery Post 912 is in the process of renewing our alcohol beverage control retail license for the purpose of moving our lounge area to our newly constructed building located on the same premises at 29 Craft Street, Rousas Point, New York. If you have any questions, please call me, and it's signed sincerely, Hector A. Cupp, and the third commander post 912. The next letter we have is a letter, it's unsigned, but it's from Julia Blitch. It's addressed to the village board of Rousas Point. I have been summering in your town ever since Jason Andrew and Norman Jabut moved there in 2004. It is a quiet town with little to offer in the arts, but Jason through Norton Mar has made a home for dance in the town and brought many people to Rousas Point in the summer for an evening of dance. It has been a thrill to bring high-quality dance to your rural community, and I dare to say that the evenings have been very successful, well-attended, and enhance the image of Rousas Point, a village with a lot of potential. I am sorry to learn that you are now planning to charge Norton Mar slash Jason Andrew for the use of the Civic Center. I suspect it is not understood that the only profit for this event has gone solely to the Historical Society and that many involved incur a loss, particularly Jason Andrew, who personally subsidizes any costs that hasn't been met through Norton Mar fundraising. It is a labor of love. Perhaps the altruism is misunderstood. Jason boasts your great links to show stability and fiscal responsibility. Perhaps this makes him fear that Norton Mar has lots of money. Regardless, I think it is a dreadful shame that after two years of promoting Rousas Point, the village should turn around and charge him for the privilege of mounting a huge performance that brings hundreds of people to the village and for which he receives only praise, but no financial support. Jason has hoped to bring the conservatory to the village as well. A huge undertaking that may not be possible without the village's support and help. I cannot understand why this is not supported wholly. I understand that Wyatt has closed down and that the village is in need of an influx of activity to improve its economic situation. I can't imagine why the Fête de Donnes and the possible conservatory are not seen as assets for the community. Most cities display they're as the primary means to attract businesses and residents. Check any tourist brochure across the world. Why won't Rousas Point support the efforts of Norton Mar to add to the prestige of this picturesque village? And it's signed sincerely, or it's typed sincerely, Julia Blitch. And the other two letters I have are similar. I'll read them. The next one is addressed to the mayor. Dear Mr. Rivers, I am a volunteer member of the Norton Mar organization under the direction of Jason Andrew, one of your residents. I am writing this letter for several reasons. First is to applaud your support for the great work Norton Mar and the Historical Society has done in the past two years in bringing ballet to the northern tier. What a boost to the community, visitors, local community members in the north country, and the children and adults involved in the ballet. This is just what Rousas Point needs to move forward in these times of stress. I have a special interest in the village history. First, as one who married a Saborn, maybe not a household name anymore, but was one's one. I also began my teaching career in Rousas Point and have very fond memories of the schools and students. I maintain an arts involvement with the North Country Cultural Center for the Arts and other arts organizations. Second, I once again am looking forward to the Fête de Donnes 2006 and all of the activities surrounding it. Jason and Historical Society have planned such wonderful events for your community. I appeal to you to donate the use of the Civic Center during the conservatory and Fête de Donnes. As you know, the budget for both organizations for this is not large. We all want it to happen for children, community, and tourists, and your help is the best way to help make this happen. The revenue it will bring during that time period will more than boost the economy for Rousas Point merchants, as well as exposure of what you have to offer in this great jewel of the northern tier. I look forward in hearing your decision. Thank you in advance, and please feel free to contact me if you have any questions. I am unable to be at your board meeting, as I have another meeting Monday, March 20th, and it's signed Jackie Saborn. Next letter I have is from Jason Andrew, Director. It's addressed, Dear Board Members of the village of Rousas Point, this is a letter in response to our request to reserve the Civic Center submitted to the village board on 16th January. Great societies are defined by the art they produce, moreover, the art they support. The arts are a tool to inspire civic pride, to foster community cohesion, to spur civic reform, and to strengthen democratic institutions. In short, the visual, literary, and performing arts are a way to build social capital. The arts enhance our lives and signify a healthy and productive society. Whether one prescribes to this philosophy or not, 400-plus people visited Rousas Point in one evening last summer, just as they did the summer before. They came to save ballet, they watched as dancers inspired, they forgot about their troubles for a moment, and forgot they were sitting in an ice room. This summer, the creative team of Norton Mar will team up the Rousas Point slash Shane Plain Historical Society to present Summer Dance Rousas Point 2006, a month-long celebration of art and performance in the village of Rousas Point. This event will be like no other in terms of its artistic performance and potential for Rousas Point to show the north country just how attractive and unique this village truly is. Summer Dance will include a conservatory of dance, an art exhibition, a film series, and the third annual Fête de Donnes concert. All these events will take place at the Civic Center, which will become the creative heart for dance training and performance, a place for inspiration and imagination. Despite ongoing requests, even pleas to such local groups as the Downtown Revitalization Committee, we will receive no financial support from any established entity that exists in Rousas Point. Further, Norton Mar learned only last Wednesday, 15th of March, that the village board will impose a fee for the use of the Civic Center. This decision is unconscionable. It is discouraging. It is irresponsible. By imposing a fee for the use of the Civic Center, this board is essentially penalizing the arts, prohibiting creative thought, and hindering imagination that this village so desperately needs. Seldom in life do we get an opportunity to do something truly extraordinary. Supporting this art initiative in Rousas Point is such an opportunity. Norton Mar believes in the transformative power of the arts. As many wait for the revitalization of the waterfront, Norton Mar has been making tangible progress for the arts now. As many wait for new commerce to spur growth, Norton Mar is booking an international ballet company that will bring audiences from throughout the north country to celebrate in Rousas Point. Norton Mar believes that revitalization is now. I ask the village board to demonstrate their full support for Summer Dance by reconsidering its decision to penalize Norton Mar for use of the Civic Center. I ask that permission be granted for full use of the Civic Center from 6th of July to the 31st, free of charge. Further, I also ask that the village board commit to the future of this event by granting full use of the Civic Center for the next two years, free of charge, so we may all enjoy Summer Dance Rousas Point 2007 and 2008. With your persistence and our boundless energy, your willingness to affect change, and our joint belief in what we have begun, together we can bring renewed spirit to the future of Rousas Point and echo a message of the value of the arts to our communities and our souls to the bright future of Rousas Point. Signed, Jason Andrew, Director.
Hello. Do you have any comments?
Well, I think, uh, something to say that we just, uh, so everybody will understand that we didn't arbitrarily decide to charge, uh, this company a fee. My understanding that we're under obligation to have a minimal charge, and that's what we tried to do, the minimal charge that we charged for our facility for the three weeks that it was here. I had, when I first came to the board, I wasn't aware of all the ins and outs in the village administration and what you can give as a public user, not, but I had the intention of trying to rent the ice or just to let the seniors come to skate the ice arena in the winter, in the morning when there was nobody here to skate. And we found out that you can't, because it's municipal, it's with public funds, that we can't just have free of charge, just let the public use the facility. So, in that regard, we charge people $2 that want to skate. So, even though we'd like to give the facility free, it's apparently it's illegal to do such a thing. That's my understanding.
I think largely due to the fact that we have a fee schedule on ice time, and we also have a fee scheduled for the use of the facility during the summer ice walk.
But most of this, Ben Arnold, most of this is from the Historical Society. Really, you're really charging the Historical Society the money, you know, instead of the Norton Mar or whatever, or the fee to dance or whatever. And the, it's the Historical Society that asked these people to come up here and perform for, like Jason Andrew, to get his thing together and stuff like that. I thought the Historical Society was part of the village.
It's a non-for-profit corporation.
Warren Brewster, how much was the fee?
Hundred dollars a week.
Well, if it just has to be a nominal fee, why can't it be dollars? Or can't you just, that does not go through the law? You're charging them something.
That's totally right. Can be.
I think part of what we were doing was, we're in essence allowing for an exclusive use of the Civic Center, which is a public recreation facility for 26 days. And I think that, you know, I'm not going to say that we took out pencil and paper and looked at every possible expense that the village would incur during those 26 days. But when you think about electricity, you think about staffing, you think about the fact that we need to have someone in the evenings here to make sure that the building is secure. Uh, you know, it's about, what, $11.50 a day? We thought that that would seem like a fair charge. We decided on $100 a week, and then it wasn't quite even a fourth week, so we kind of threw that in for free. So, I, you know, I, while I certainly see that the merit in a dollar a week, I think it also helps to give this public recreation facility to at least recoup a little bit of the expense that it will be for the village otherwise. I think we have a responsibility to do that.
Well, we do have a lot of people come into the village, they stay at the Ankers, they stay here, they stay there, or, last year, there were people come from Wisconsin and stuff. I mean, you know?
They eat in the restaurants.
Yeah, and everything like that, you know? I mean, it's, it's good for Rousas Point, that's what it is. We're trying to build it up more and more every year, and if we can, you know, that's what we need.
Part of the problem, I think-
But the village does not supply anything for, for none of this, you know? I mean-
I beg your pardon. We spent $600 for stage engineering for that, two years ago.
But you can use other functions besides.
It's not, it's not.
But it could be down the road.
The thing of it is, I feel that the Historical Society and the village have worked together, and we turned over a check to the village of $5,000 a while back to help maintain the, um, the railroad station. So, I mean, it's like one hand washes the other here. I mean, it's important to this community to try to bring in as many cultural things as possible, with the way everything is right just right now. And business downtown, it's very, it's very difficult, all over for business around here. And, and it boosted my, you know, my business while they, they were here last year and the year before. And it's, um, it just, it just seems good for the community.
And I really think also that, you know, if you look at the, the New York State Constitution, we're really not even supposed to be allowing municipal government property to be used free of charge. I mean, really what we've been doing in the past, we've been in error for. And, and, you know, we have that as well, and especially with the ice time and with the summer. I mean, our posted rates for the summer use of the rain are $55 an hour. So, I think that $300 for 26 days doesn't seem like an unusually high pay.
It doesn't, but when you're talking, you know, the people are coming in from all over, and a lot of them are trying to volunteer their time. I mean, we're trying to house them and everything to bring some culture here. We, we had people from Montreal, from Vermont, all over that came into the village. So, the village has to look at it that way also, that it's helping the businesses. If the businesses don't thrive, then we're not going to have village.
And I totally agree with you. So, nonetheless, we're-
But can we go down?
I mean, well, we're still responsible, though, for the village property that the government, the village of Rousas Point owns. I mean, we still have a responsibility for that. And I totally agree, Sandy, with what you said. I totally do.
They're just finding it that it's more than they can afford now, to be able to spend $100, you know, to do that. Because everybody's just volunteering their time, so, I don't know. I, I just look at, because we're, you know, with the Historical Society and the village, that they could just overlook this and just charge minimal, or at least just tell us for the next two years that we can do this for the next two years at, um, $10, you know, or $5 a day, you know, or a doll, you know, a dollar a day, even. But, um, they're saying they can't, they can't afford that.
Hi, I'm Shantel Donovan. Um, to me, it seems like interesting that you do have, you have to charge something, but a dollar or $5 a week really isn't that big of a deal. Um, if you're looking at $11 a day coming in, what is doing for the businesses and what the businesses can put out as far as taxes? I mean, we have nothing to truly bring in the business, people in the business at this point, to have something that's already started building, what, four years now?
No, not yet.
And it's building each year? That's one thing out of, right now, we have nothing really left in this business. So, $11 a day to keep the businesses, you know, going, as far as taxes go?
I also think what's happening with why, if, if we have all these people from all different states coming in, they, they might decide, hey, what a gorgeous area, let's go back on vacation, you know? But if we exclude, if this gets canceled, well, it's, you know, it's just-
How many people do you expect to have to bring in to the village?
To bring into the village?
How many, roughly?
Well, he's planning on having a summer dance conservatory this summer, and he's going to, um, send out over 200 invitations to dancers to come to participate. He's hoping to get a minimum of, plus, teachers and people that have to help, and so you're getting their, and the kids' parents and, and stuff. But the fact the dance, we had over 230, in the first year, we had over 400 last year, so we're hoping, you know, that it'll only get better and bigger. I mean, you can't guarantee that we're going to be anybody here. Um, one of the things that Jason would, like everybody, to be sure to know is that the summer dance conservatory is not making money. Yeah. He is going to charge for the kids to come, but those charges are for, paid for his teachers and, um, maybe some of their travel and that kind of thing. So, he's not going to be, you know, like putting a lot of money in his pocket for it. And he's also going to be approaching the people in the village to house some of the dancers that are coming in that can't travel right now. So, it's not like he's going to make a lot of money off of this, and he's just kind of doing it for the village. One of the little things, I think you're correct with what I'm on, but I think right now, the Historical Society is committed to, um, for $10,000, I think, for the railroad station. Isn't it from the, isn't our share?
Our share?
Our share. I think we have to, I think we're committed to $10,000 for the railroad station, for the, I don't know-
Restoration, isn't it?
-the building or the engineering thing, or the, yeah, the roof or whatever. Just so you're aware of that. And we have it, and part of the reason is because-
What's that? Is that in writing, anywhere?
Is it in writing?
Yes. Is it in writing anywhere? I mean, between the village and the Historical Society?
It's sort of, you know, it's like a contract that they'll provide. I don't think it's ever been formalized, but it's also an understanding.
I mean, if you have to change the officers or something, could they, could they change the purpose of the organization and donate your money somewhere else?
Well, it's already admitted for that.
Yeah. I think we voted on it, and-
It's in our minutes, I'm, I'm sure, at the Historical Society, isn't it?
Yes. Uh, George?
Yes, Senator.
Oh, Lord. The thing, too, is we're bringing, we're seeing people coming into this community that have a lot of new ideas, bright, and can do a lot for our community, and we don't want to lose them. It doesn't matter, you could have been here 30 years, 35 years, but if you've never done anything to improve what's going on in our community, what good is that? And, and this is what we want to see, new bright ideas coming in all the time to help us get this, this village on its feet. You know, I've been here 14 years, and it's struggling all the time, and I would just like to see us stay on track. Right now, I feel we're on track. And I'd like to, I'd like to see that continue. I'd be very unhappy not to have had this summer dance here.
So, can I ask, is that, is that really what, what is going to happen, that if the fee remains at $300, has Jason decided that this will not take place?
No. No. It's still going to-
It's still happening.
It's still going to happen anyway.
He didn't answer tonight what we're going to do. Does he want to answer now, or can you wait?
Well, I'm sure he'll wait.
I'd like to, I'd like to hold off on any decision, total boards here for our next meeting.
But, okay, but the thing with it is, when I talk to Jason, this would, this would be advice, he's not going to, he has a lot of work in this.
Can you wait till next meeting?
This is going to be his last time that he holds the dance?
Yes. Two weeks, two weeks.
Where would he go?
Hi. Um, Jason will do it here. I mean, he works in New York City. He's just doing this as part of, for the, for the community, because he likes the dinner. He's doing that for us.
So, the amount of money that you're charging them is actually stifling the progress of Rousas Point, and there's no other way to look at it, because what that is bringing into Rousas Point is enormous. But if you're looking at financially, culturally, um, just advertisement, you're stifling the progress that we're bringing in.
Can we wait?
Mr. Markinson?
Uh, can you ask, what, welcome Jason, who we don't know, but he does have commitments, charity commitments in Plattsburgh.
So, you think likely he would then have his conservatory in Plattsburgh, who it has been?
I'm not saying that. I said he had, he does, right now, has commitments in Plattsburgh.
I think we all want what's best for the village. You just try to come up with a minimal fee for the use of the building. I mean, we're, we all want a conservatory to come to the village. We want, certainly don't want to chase business away, especially in this, in these times. And, you know, we're trying to do a lot of things at the same-
Well, I don't think he's going to stop this year of doing this. He's going to put on the dance this year.
I mean, I suppose, let's say if it wasn't Jason, and if it was some other people at some time that they want to use the facility, I mean, are we setting a pattern? I mean, there, is there some, is there a base that we want to charge for the use of the facility? And so, somebody wants to come in and have a car show, or they want to have some other craft show, or they want to use, you know, they want to use it in a different sense? Maybe they used to have a-
Well, why can't we lock Fête de Dance in for two years, three years, and then anybody else comes in, then if they go, you know, this is the first one we had, if they have any problem that you're charging them more than you're charging Jason, he's the first one that's been able to use it. We have this.
Really? You ain't charging Jason, you're charging the Historical Society, really.
Absolutely, yeah.
You know? I mean, it's not that you're charging, it's the historical society that you're charging.
And the fact that the Historical Society is using this money to restore the railroad station, which is going to benefit Rousas Point.
No, you're right. And, and one of the things that we discussed when we, we had the original discussion about what we, what we would perhaps charge for a fee for this particular event was that I think one of the things that we need to do is we need to establish four groups like the Historical Society who do want to use the rec center. And you're right, that, I mean, at least in my mind, there's a difference between a group like the Historical Society who is really doing this event for the village versus another group that is doing it not for that particular purpose. I think you're absolutely right. But I, I would also say that we did consider that in coming up with the $300, because very likely, if it were another group that was not associated with the village at all for 26 days' use of the rec center, I certainly would hope that we would be charging a whole lot more than $300. I mean, 26 days, that's a substantial amount of time, and if it weren't a group that was affiliated with the village and has been so giving to the village itself, I would certainly hope that the amount would be substantially more than that.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Well, then, do you charge the fire department for use of the building 4th of July?
No, we don't.
But the fire department is part of the village.
If the Historical Society is part of the village?
Most, I, it's a non-for-profit corporation, but it's entirely different.
We work very closely with them, but it's not part of the government of the village.
What about the people who use the, uh, center for the craft show that's connected with the weekend?
Yeah, that's, that's for the village. That money goes to the village.
What she brings in from the craft show goes to the village?
What, what we charge for the boost to be in there goes to the village.
So, it's not, it's the, the village that's doing that, it's not one person that's organizing?
No. We have one person doing it for the village.
Yeah, but for the village. It's part of the, uh-
Again, and I ask for two weeks. Total, total boards here?
Oh, I would, I'd say so.
Yeah.
All right?
My opinion is so.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. We have a letter that I received, the next four letters were received at 5:00 this evening. They're addressed to Chief Robert Craig. First one is from Patrolman Joey Upton. Subject is resignation. I'm informing you that I'm resigning from the Rousas Point Police Department effective immediately. I would like to thank you and the village for hiring me. It has been a privilege. I always enjoyed working for you and the citizens of Rousas Point. Unfortunately, due to recent events that have been going on concerning the police department, I feel I have no choice. There seems to be some things that have been happening with little or no input from the members of the police department. I think these recent events and the future of the police department will put the citizens of Rousas Point at a, at a disservice. I want you to understand that our resignation has no bearing on you. I have had three different heads of departments that I have worked for in the past eight years, and you have been an exemplary role model of how a chief should act and manage a department. I am proud to have worked for you. I hope that the citizens do not suffer due to an individual intruding into affairs that they should not. Once again, thank you for being an outstanding boss, and good luck in the future. Signed, Joey Upton. So, we need a motion.
I need a motion, Board.
I don't want to make a motion. Just have to write a citation.
Is there anybody that can hang on to Bob? If it definitely gets in, you're done.
I don't think this should come as, as a surprise to the board. I know we've discussed this before, back four, six weeks ago, when the decision was made to stop utilizing the part-time people. We're going to use a lot, you want to utilize them June, July, and August. These people have worked five, six, seven years for the department as part-time police officers, and they've worked year-round in a part-time position, and that was, what they wanted was year-round employment and, and a part-time basis to supplement their full-time income. Three of the individuals that worked for us on a part-time basis are sheriff department personnel. One is a customs officer who came from the sheriff department. Utilizing them in June, July, and August, that is their busiest time at their full-time employment. That's when we can utilize them the least amount of time up here. The other nine months of the year that we utilize them the most. And I think we discussed this before, that being cut to June, July, and August isn't something that they're looking at or interested in.
You said this something though when we spoke after the last meeting, that you were going to sit with the board and we were going to discuss the police situation in general? And, and I, that's why I was a little surprised when I saw these today.
You mentioned, you mentioned that to me last week when I ran into you in the, in the garage in the village office, but that's the first I've heard of that at all.
Because that was, it was about 48 hours earlier when we made the decision about that. That was on Wednesday afternoon that I spoke with Bob, and the decision was made on Monday night's board meeting two weeks ago. So that we were going to sit down and basically discuss how to handle things like Aaron having left the department, and that we were going to ask Bob to sit with us so that we wouldn't be making a decision without him, we would be discussing all of the issues with him. So I guess I would say the same thing that Junior said, is there any way that until we're able to have that meeting with you, that you can get him to hold off on this? Is that possible?
Don't accept the resignations.
Well, but, you know.
Don't accept the resignations. I'll tell him that, that you haven't accepted the resignations and you want to discuss it with, with me in the full board in a meeting between the, the six of us before any decisions are made to accept resignations.
I, I have, I certainly would, that's kind of where we left off two weeks ago Monday, when we had our meeting, so...
I think I spoke to you just this week, no, last week, I'm sorry. And we discussed the same thing about the police department and that we had, the board would like to sit down and give you a, a direction as to what we think we'd like to, you know, to see that the police department wanted, especially with Aaron leaving. And I thought we had agreed upon that. I did hear about the, the letters of resignation coming in a couple of weeks ago.
I've been, I've...
Brian, you've been discussing it with Brian, we haven't had a chance to, you know, we did, we would like to, we still would like to, if you can hang out the reservation, the resignations until we get a chance to, you know, show you. And originally when we talked about saving the patrolmen, because we knew that Aaron was possibly leaving and that we, we needed more people probably in the summertime, we'd be one, one person short.
No, I totally agree. I don't want to lose them. I've been, I've been keeping them holding off on these resignations for the last three meetings. I think you, well, you've come in and spoke with me, Junior, on four or five different occasions about this, and...
See, I might have missed an informed vote, because the last thing that's happened, decided we could use them when he thought he needed. And George agreed your name, then...
That was his consent of...
That was the way I left the meeting, I went and told you that. Then I guess a couple of days later, I was wrong because he decided not to use them when he needed them, but I thought we decided to use them on the meeting.
And I didn't think we had made a decision, because we were going to ask Bob to come to a meeting so we could meet with him and not make it apart from him.
I made a motion not to accept the resignation.
I, I would second that. If, if you feel that they could wait until we had a chance to sit down with you...
Well, if I ask them, if I ask them to wait, I'm sure they will.
I have a motion by trustee Moore, seconded by trustee Burt. Any other discussion?
So we're trying to motion to...
Not to accept.
Not to accept.
No other discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Should we try to set a time right now, seeing as Bob is here tonight, to, to have him at a meeting while we can discuss this? I mean, our next meeting is our organizational meeting, but...
I think it should be sooner than later. This has gone on long and upward.
Next meeting?
That's fine. When would be the next meeting?
April 2nd, I think.
Third.
Third, sorry, April 3rd.
Okay.
All right, Bob?
That's fine, that's fine. As long as we're on this, you're not, you're going to hold off on reading the rest of them anyway, then at this point.
Right. The other three resignations were from Tracy Hillker, Patrolman George Head, and Patrolman Richard Blanchard. So we'll just ignore those, and we have a motion that's carried. The last piece of correspondence was just handed to me just before the meeting. It was a letter from Montgomery Hosehook and Ladder Company, number one, it's addressed to the mayor and trustees. We wish to inform you of a new member who has been approved to our company for a probationary period of six months, Michael Sestertigot, Four Beacon Heights Drive, Ross's Point, New York. Please act on this number as soon as possible. Respectful yours, assigned Sean Shagno, secretary. We need a motion.
I'll move that we accept the new member for his probationary period of six months.
Second. Moved by trustee Benfield, seconded by trustee Moore. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And believe it or not, that's it.
I have one work building, a public works employee, no? It's on my agenda for tonight. Rec Center? Is it on?
I haven't seen anything on that one.
Oh, the part-timer that was here.
Part-timer that resigned.
Part-timer at the rec center? No, what?
I didn't, we didn't do that last one?
I don't think we did it.
Agenda for 3/20.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It must be in my other folder, my apology. And we have another resignation. This is signed from Daniel Yaky. It's addressed, it's a letter of resignation, it's addressed to whom it may concern. I, Daniel Yaky, do hereby resign from the village of Ross's Point Public Works Department. I am resigning due to health reasons occurred on February 25th. I was participating in an indoor soccer game when I tore my ACL in my right knee. I contacted Mike O'Brien, thought I wouldn't be in for a few days, only to find out my injury was much worse. We again spoke a few days later, and I informed him that I wouldn't be able to perform my duties as a part-time seasonal laborer at the recreation center. He advised me that he would have to replace me because of the upcoming busy schedule at the civic center. I told Mike to do what he had to do to keep the schedule going at the civic center. I told him that would be fine. It's not that I don't want to work at the village of Ross's Point, PWD. I've enjoyed very much. It was the fact that I tore my right ACL and need surgery corrected. So in ending, I really appreciate the chance to work at the village of Ross's Point, PWD, but due to my injury, I have to resign. My position with the village of Ross's Point, PWD, and it's signed sincerely, Yaky. P.S., thank you very much for the opportunity. We need a motion.
Motion accepted.
Second. Motion by trustee Moore, seconded by trustee Burt. Any discussion?
I only to wish him well with the recuperation of his knee. So he was doing a very good job, so it's unfortunate.
And no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. The report of the mayor and the trustees, I only have one thing on the agenda tonight, surplus or ADX handheld meter equipment, and we make a motion to have it advertised for sale.
Second.
Moved by trustee Burt, seconded by trustee Moore. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Trustee Jarvis is in the absence tonight, trustee Penfield.
The first item that I have tonight on the agenda is a travel authorization for Tom Reed, our chief wastewater treatment plant operator, to attend the New York Rural Water Association's annual technical conference. The dates are from May 21st through May 25th, and I would like to put that in form of a motion. He plans to take the village vehicle, and it seems like it's a good conference, I think Karen Malinski is also attending, but I'll make a motion to approve the travel authorization for Tom Reed.
Second. Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Moore. Any discussion? Is this a real call, Phil?
No.
There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The other thing that I would like to say, and I just want to make sure, since we have so many people here from the Historical Society, I just don't want the issue that we discussed earlier tonight to leave the two groups being the village board and village government and Historical Society at odds with each other. I really hope that that doesn't happen. And I think that in spite of our choice and, and the decision of this board to, to at least at this point, and again, we're going to go back and think about it for two weeks, I guess, but I don't want the fact that, that we've decided on this fee to affect what has been a very good working relationship between the two groups. And I also don't want it to be seen by the members of the Historical Society as a lack of support for this summer program that, that you all are undertaking and that Jason is undertaking as well. And I think that's really important, because there was tremendous support even during the two meetings when we discussed Jason's letter and the fee of it being sent. There has been tremendous support, and I would expect continued support from at least, from my standpoint on the board, of, of what you are undertaking. And I really hope that that's understood. I'm not sure that I'm making myself as clear as I might be, but I think that it's, it's just important to, to having said that, at least it's important to me. It certainly is not in any way, shape, or form, anything that, that, you know, that means that we don't support the activities of the summer. And I really hope that that's not how it was taken or how it has been taken to this point. So, that's it. If you may.
Thank you, trustee Penfield. Trustee Moore.
Yes, I'd like for press permission for Karen Malinski to send the same, same seminar that Tommy Reed is going to, same press, and make that into a motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Moore, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay. Permission for Bill Johnson, Eric Miller to attend the seminar May 7th to May 11th for a fluid system for electrical department, total price of $730, the IEP paid for the meals, and I'd like that in Boston, I'd like to make that into a motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Moore, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion?
Phil, is this the training, or maybe Brian, you can answer that, when we originally got the system?
Yes.
That we were informed about?
Yes.
Okay. And people haven't gone before to this, right? So these two will be, Phil and Eric, of these two will be trained?
Right. When we, when the IEP purchased the camera, that was part of the, part of the purchase price, was for one week of training, two people in Boston. The only thing we have to pay for is the meals.
And when they come back, do they in turn train the rest of the group?
Yes. It's more of a software side of it and what the camera can do. Like, we've already took an eight-hour course already on thermal imaging. So it's more of the, the database and what it consists of.
Any other discussion?
Oh, yeah, I just picked list what the village crews have been doing the last couple of weeks.
Did we vote on a motion?
Oh, okay.
I lost it there somewhere. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, what the village crews have been doing for the last couple of weeks, they've been really busy repairing sewer line on Chapman Street, repairing manholes, street light repair, removed conduit, guy who works on Maple Street in Clinton, and that's it.
Do you vote?
We'll vote.
Yeah, Phil said.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have carried now.
Silent vote.
That's it for me.
Thank you, trustee Moore. Trustee Burtz?
No, no, I have nothing.
Well, thank you, sir. Village clerk?
I just have two quick items, just a reminder, tomorrow is election day. The polls are open from noon to nine here in this room. I encourage everyone to vote. And it's also my pleasure to present to the board our tentative budget for the 2006/7 fiscal year.
Harson, you want to read your budget message? Or you want me to?
Usually you do that at the budget hearing.
Okay. So we're sending, are we going to set on that next meeting as a budget, as a public hearing for budget?
I'll move that we set the April 3rd hearing, the meeting, but they, as a public hearing for the budget.
Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Moore. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Harson?
The only thing I want to report on is the $180,000 that was not covered by the EFC funding for the sewer project. We were able to attain a 10-year loan for an amount of interest rate of 5.25 percent. That was from TV Bank North. You also should have a, a public hearing for any increase in water rates.
Yeah, that's in the tentative budget. You want to have that at the same time?
No, you should. It's part of the budget process.
I need a motion. Motion carried. Any increase in water rates? Second. Moved by trustee Burt, seconded by trustee Moore. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Bob?
Just one thing, sir. There's been rumors going around of my intent to enter into retirement. The, I am in the 20-year police fire retirement system. In June of this year, I will have completed 20 years as a police chief with this village. At five years prior to that, with the sheriff's department, Fortin County. So in June, I'll have 25 years of service in this business. I've thought long and hard about it, and recently came to a conclusion, and I wanted to officially advise the board of my intent to retire effective July 1st of this year. My wife and I were blessed nine years ago, the new little one, I've got a nine-year-old. It's not that I'm looking at jumping into retirement, but those who have retired know what I've gone through and how difficult the decision can be. I have confirmed with the retirement system that my 20 years of service with the village is completed in June, and July 1st is a good date, so that will give the board over 90 days' notice. So if you choose to replace me, and you can get a replacement, I would more than gladly work with them for the, through the transition period. If you choose to replace me and can't get a replacement before July 1st, I will be more than happy to come back and work with anyone that you choose to replace me for a happy transition period. I'd like to thank the board and the village for allowing me the 20 years of service to you, but I think it's time to spend some time with my nine-year-old.
Don't make me a mad person, Robert. And far as I'm concerned, I'm saddened because I respect you, I respect you as an advocate in this chair.
I know.
I've supported you, and I've supported the police department, and I'll continue to do that. You have done a great job for the village.
I appreciate it.
In a certain, certain, very grateful.
Thank you.
And I would add to that, Bob, your willingness to come back if we aren't able to find a suitable replacement for you right away, I think really speaks very highly of your, your thoughts and...
I love this community, I always have.
Thoughts and points.
And, and I don't want to leave this position and leave a void that needs to be there. And let's face it, if I'm going to be on retirement, I'm going to have some time, so I can come back and...
Part-timer.
Part-timer, yeah, there you go. It's a lie.
It's definitely appreciated, Bob, it's a very nice gesture.
I know, and you, Bob, that I've, I've worked with you in different capacities, and we've always had a amicable relationship.
Yes.
And we did discuss some things last week, and I hope you take those dearly, and maybe And we did discuss some things last week, and I hope you take those dearly, and maybe in the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to talk about using your expertise to continue on as the, in a certain capacity for the village.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. That's all I have, sir. Brian?
Thanks, Bob.
The board has a copy of the list of the duties that were done by the public works in the electric department. Do you have any questions? I mean, I'm still working on, on a monthly schedule, so you'll know tentatively what we want to do for the month, for the next month. That's it.
Thank you, Brian. Melissa?
Thank you. First of all, do you have any questions that I can answer on my written report that I prepared? Thank you to Brian for the time he spent with me coordinating on the upcoming project. We have another project meeting coming up next Tuesday on the boat launch redesign, and we're working together to be sure that we're prepared when we do get into construction and taking advantage of the, really, local expertise that we have as we look at designing this project. Okay, well, my first request would then be for authorization for the mayor to sign the Alon design contract. That has been reviewed by the Department of State, some additional language referencing our contract, the Department of State on our grants was included, and with your permission, we'll ask the mayor to sign that.
Any new motion for that, please?
I'll move that we accept or authorize the mayor to sign the Alon's design.
I got a question.
Yeah.
It goes back to the sketch that you saw, on the dry hydrant?
Yes.
What is that going to look like? Is that going to be, how high is that dry hydrant going to be?
I prefer that to Brian, okay, in terms of what they look like.
Sometimes you can use like a regular hydrant, and they're marked dry hydrants, so they're...
What would it be in this case? Because that's kind of like, you know, I mean, we're putting a nice walkway in front, and doing something for it to be, I was thinking out of the sidewalks.
It would be three foot on the edges of bank somewheres. We have 30 feet of hard suction on our fire trucks that we need to hook up to it, so we have to be within 30 feet of the hydrant.
But I, when you said three feet, is that, is that like the white pipe that you see, or is that a fire hydrant style?
It could be either.
Okay.
You know, you can design it however you want. You can make it look like a, you know, something...
You can make it decorative?
Yeah, you can make it decorative.
Well, yeah, you want it to be as...
Yeah, you can...
As possible, right?
You just don't want to, especially to get up in that area, it happens to be close to my truck, so I don't like it.
Who might need it though?
That, that location was chosen, actually, at Alon's recommendation because the fire truck could pull off in that parking area and stay there. I guess apparently, if Brian needed it downtown, they'd just leave the truck and pump it up the, up the hill, so. So, we'll go for it as we will find a lovely decorative...
Melissa, quick question. I'm looking at this print.
Yes.
And it's showing proposed fire hydrant. Is that, you going to lay 250 feet of pipe to the south?
No, no, it's going to go out into the lake, I think, right there on the bank.
That's what I'm looking at, is this...
Yeah, I think that's just to give you a, a distance from the pier.
Okay.
I think that...
I'm looking at that as a pipeline, and that's the way it looks.
No, I, I hope not. That would be really...
I was going to say it through ridiculous.
My understanding was it would go right out into the lake here.
Straight.
We, we, Brian suggested that we move it from the original location to the south because of the stilting.
Because of the sanding, yeah.
So, we said we needed to move it to the north, and then, no, near the parking area seemed to make sense. But we'll be on a search. Show me where you get fire hydrants, if you can find it.
Any other discussion?
No, I'm just...
I don't believe I have a second yet.
Oh, can we have a second, that one?
No.
Okay, seconded by Trustee Burks. All in favor of, of signing the contract, vote by use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you very much. Okay, I will have a proposal for you, hopefully on the additional survey work at the next board meeting. Couple of quick items that are, since my report. But our plan is to get the revised downtown and waterfront plan to the village board and the steering committee on the 30th of March. We are hoping to schedule a joint meeting with those two groups to review it prior to get a, a public meeting where we would put, basically, the final draft out to the public. Would Wednesday, the 5th, be, work for the board, maybe a, a four o'clock meeting on, on Wednesday, April 5th? I haven't checked with the steering committee.
We'll make it anyway, or earlier. I have to pick on my grandson's plan.
Okay. Do we do evening? We could do evening? No, I can't do it. I can do evening, yeah. We do a 6:30? 6:30?
April 3rd.
Anytime, right. Couple, I, I'm sorry, I know it's two days after your organization meeting, but I don't want to postpone, but if we don't do this, we have to wait till the end of April, so. 6:30 on the 5th?
Just for me.
Okay, I'll put a reminder out. At that meeting, in addition to discussing the downtown and waterfront plan and your comments, I thought we might want to look ahead to the new round of applications that are going to be due at the end of May, the local waterfront revitalization program and the quality communities grants. And so, as we look at the projects and the plan, we might want to start talking about what our application should look like for, for those grant applications. Okay, so those are kind of the two purposes for the meeting. Okay, I am also going to get, review a proposal at the next board meeting to do a, a new appraisal of the state dock, because that is a large portion of our match for both the 2003 and 2004 EPS. We have a November '03 appraisal, but it only, my understanding is it only did the prop, the bank of the lake shore, did not include much for the structure, I think it was $500 for the structure or something. So, just with the increase in value of lake shore property, it's definitely worth our while, I think, to have that reappraisal done. So, I'll, I'll have a call for you on that at the next board meeting. I have been invited to speak at the Plattsburgh New Rotary on April 5th. They would like to hear about what's happening with Wyatt, and I'm going to include our revitalization activities in it also. So, with your approval, go ahead and do that, and, yeah, so I have a question.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
I hope the meeting's in public at this time. Anybody wishing to address the board may do so. Tom?
Tom Maffa from Montgomery Street. Two brief items I'd like to address the board on. One is concerning the police department, which I didn't know any of this stuff was going to be going on tonight. I would urge you to seriously reconsider what you're doing with your part-time police officers. When I was first on the board in 1985, at that time, the village used to train our own police officers. We sent them to the 400-hour police academy in Plattsburgh. And what usually happened was, some were good, some weren't. The good ones usually got a job with a more full-time police department after we trained them. Then, we came up with this idea, that it might have been Chief Craig at the time, I'm not sure exactly the timing, but we came up with this idea of mining the sheriff's department for already-trained deputies that were already being paid state retirement benefits through the, and health insurance and everything through the county. So, it was a tremendous savings for us, and we paid, at the time, marginal amounts, rate of $10 an hour or something for fully trained police officers. I would urge you to use them as much as you can. I think you're doing probably the correct thing and not immediately replacing Aaron Lefay, who was an outstanding police officer, until the financial picture of the village stabilizes a little bit with Aris and everybody. But when you're losing your largest employer and your largest amount of jobs, that's the time for more police, not less. I mean, just in any village or town or city, when you have potential unemployment, that's when you need stabilizing influence of a local police department. Second issue that I have, completely unrelated to the first issue, is the water plant. On the water plant, when I was mayor, we reduced the coverage of the water plant by eliminating the midnight shift through attrition. We didn't have a midnight water plant operator. The reason that we didn't was because we had gone to 9/11 dialing, and we didn't need the water plant operator to answer the fire phones, which was his primary purpose in being there. Very little water usage on a midnight shift. That was when we had a 500 gallon, 500,000 gallon tank. We now have 1.5 million gallon tank, but we have full-time 24-hour coverage in a water plant. Now, if, if Wyatt closes, as I understand it, they're paying approximately half of the bond payment for the new water tower, roughly, through their water rates, the same as we're all paying a portion of the debt reduction through our water rates, monthly. If they leave, somebody's going to have to pick up their share of the water payment. And even if they don't leave, if they just close the plant and turn the valve off, we're going to be picking up a tremendous thing. The time now, in the next three years, is to start saving money in the water department. And I suggest that one way that you could do it is possibly eliminate shifts, maybe four to 12 shift and a midnight to eight shift. We got three times as much water on hand, make sure the tank is filled up at 4:00 PM, and monitor the usage, you know, we can monitor now, you know exactly what the usage is now, they, they record it every hour how much water's in that tank, and see if you can't get by with just a day shift operator. Of course, if there's a major fire in a village or something, you'd call the water plant operator in on overtime to man the pumps and stuff and keep the tank full. But I think that the money that you could save, if you eliminate two shifts, which is really comes out to 14 shifts a week by eliminating those two 16-hour shifts, that's almost five positions, or, no, excuse me, three positions, three times five shifts a week is 15, that's 14. So, you have a potential to save close to $100,000 a year in manpower just by doing that. Now, I don't advocate firing anybody, but I think through attrition and reassignment within the village, I think it could be done. And I think that's kind of an easy way to get out of serious problems in a water plant, especially before, I know you're having a meeting, hearing the next meeting to discuss water rate increases. I would suggest that if these steps were taken, it would eliminate the need to raise the water rates. And what you need to do is make Russell's point as attractive as you can for new people coming in, new businesses coming in, and one way to do it is to keep your utility rates as low as you can.
That issue is, is being addressed, Tom, and hasn't been addressed. We're looking at that like, also other alternatives to be used. I mean, it's not, it's not an issue that we're just set on a shot and forgotten, it's, it's out there.
Well, I...
I talked to the village engineer two weeks ago about this. There are certain things that have to come into play. What has changed is the parameters of the health department and the monitoring that has to be done on water. And that's one of the big issues that we have to look at. We may have to spend money in order to do, be able to do that. And we are looking at it. I just want to let you know that we are looking at it.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. I was just wondering, you know, I've always wondered why they added the position back after we ran without it for three years, without the midnight shift.
It was usage. The compensation was running all night long, when, when Wyatt was going full board. It was running all night long, and you can't run it without an operator.
No, the pumps can't be run unmanned. They're obsolete kind of pumps, I understand that, but I know, I know when I left, it was fine unless there was a major increase in water damage or something.
We were pumping 1.2 million gallons a day in a 500 gallon tank.
Yeah, most of it on the day shift, right?
It was going right up and through. I don't know, I, I can't tell you that, I don't know. But I'm just saying. So, we are looking at those, we're looking at all options at this point. Marie Booth, Marie?
I'm Maureen, first of Pratt Street. I'm here to address about the letter that we received about the water in our electric bills this month. Everybody that I have talked to is panic-stricken, and I don't believe they understand all, and they're worried about how they're going to clean their water tanks and their faucets and their wash machines, and I, I think that we need a little bit more information. There's a lot of people that are saying they want to, if they knew the exact day, they'll shut off their main water line coming into the house, therefore, that isn't going to do what you were thinking was going to happen, correct, with the flushing? Or is that acceptable to, to turn that, the main water in your home off?
One thing you check, I understand, is that they're really, I don't think the residents have anything to worry about.
But that letter certainly scared them.
That letter was mandated by the county health department. It was mandated by the county health. The reason why is that every, I think it's, what, every month or every other month or something, we have to, water people go out to different places in the village and take samples, right? And then they're set to do a lab, and they're tested for lead content and all the contents. Well, if you had piping put in your house pre-1972 copper piping, they use 50/50 solder. 50/50 solder will let lead into the water. And it's usually the residents, it's not the village, it's not the village, but the village's water is safe.
No, I think, but I think Maureen is referring to the, the things I've taken, the, I don't even know what it's called, screen, and the screen off the tap, and with the washing machine filters, and I think she's talking about when they use the sequest, the flushing that they have to do.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's what... But I also wanted to address that lead, as long as you brought that up, George, because I believe that we got another letter, you know, it could have been a year ago, I don't know, you know how time flies, but, to tell us to, that we had no concern about the lead if we, before we took a drink...
Let it run for a couple of hours.
Let it run. So, why now are, are we being concerned about the lead?
I'd like to know why too, but you get, Phil, maybe you can address, and the county health...
Well, part of it is the, the ratio of lead in the water, and I'm not really saying it's correct, like, has they, they changed the limits where it used to be, say, 80, it's been reduced to 60, so it's making it more difficult for our water department to fall within that guideline. In fact, they're even talking about diminishing that, that allowable limit per thousand or million or whatever it is, even lower than that. We were fine when it was 80, but then when they dropped it to, say, 60, it just brought us right on the cusp, and we've been just hitting it. And that's why those letters, every time we send a sample and if it hits, say, 61, we have to send the letters out. So, this...
Well, so if people close their main in the basement, that's not going to help any...
No, the whole purpose of this, when this, when the sequest is used, it's to basically flush the lines and get rid of the loose corrosion in the pipes and the water. We're going to be putting another letter out or another notice out with the electric bills, I believe, first of April, and it's going to be a little bit more detailed on what needs to be done. And for some people, it's very, it seems very, starting to be very difficult, because certain things may loosen in those, in those water lines, those old water lines corrosion, and that may plug, for example, your intake to your washer or your kitchen faucet, whereas if you can take your screens off after the sequest has been in, which is loosen this stuff, and rinse them out and drain them and let it run, it, it'll stop. I have something similar in Danmore, and we lived there, they cleaned the lines, and I, my washer barely ran till I took and cleaned the traps, so.
But people don't want that. They just, everyone I've talked to is panic-stricken, and they're going to shut their main off. And they're spreading the word to shut their main off.
But if you shut it off, it's not cleaning the place in your house also.
That's what I'm saying. I wanted you to be aware, but that's what people are going to do.
They shouldn't be turning them on. Right, Brian?
But they're not going to...
Because they're going to have to turn them on to let it...
Yeah, won't it be the case that when then they turn the main back on, you're going to have the same problem? Turning off the main won't be good.
It's going to be different.
So, it's, so then it's going to be right there to come right back through.
Yeah, great. So, this will, clean it out, or, or a flow in the system.
So, the other, I, I really hope that the next letter is, is clearer so that people are not as frightened. But for years now, I have been hearing that you shouldn't be drinking our water, because I have been drinking Russ's Point water for my entire life.
All right.
And I've been told by many, many people that I'm in the minority. I would like to take a poll in this room. Who drinks Russ's Point water? Raise their hand. So, three of the board members, yeah. Okay, thank you. I'll drink this morning.
Thank you, Maureen. Anybody out?
Sandra Kelly, Lake Street. Just want to say that I'm concerned as a businessperson here and as a citizen, while serving, I just want to let you know that while serving as the town coordinator for county council for economic opportunity for 10 and a half years, I had an occasion to work one day at least at the Russ's Point office. During this time, I watched three administrators, Jim Fox, Terry Dunn, Mark Baucher, game and win. I also conducted, during my 10, concluded during my 10 and a half years at the Russ's Point office, that a hostile working environment existed within the Russ's Point office. The hostility in a Russ's Point office ranged from intimidation to physical assault, and the village could have been sued more than once as a result of the hostile working conditions that were permitted to exist in the Russ's Point office. We cannot afford to lose another administrator, especially one who has stood up to intimidation and kept the village working as a team. However, the rumor is that Phil Bahrmann is resigning. My only hope is that the board can change his mind. I know he's been offered enough... the board can change his mind. I know he's been offered another position elsewhere, but as I'm here tonight, I see there's many other resignations going on, so I am going to address the rumors that I have heard. A few months ago, John Burks was appointed to the, to the board of trustees to fill vacancy left by the resignation of John Hufferell. As such, Mr. Burks was to serve as caretaker in the position until a general election could be held to fill the vacancy on the board. However, rumor is, Mr. Burks took it upon himself to conduct an audit of several village offices. These actions have resulted in the reduction of the police patrol, police officers, rumors of resignations, retirement, and general chaos within the village government. It has also been rumored that several highly experienced village officials may retire or resign their positions if the current state affairs are permitted to continue. Also, like with the, what we talked about before, with the police department. One thing that was also said to me is that the state police possibly might be patrolling. To staff the department with retired colleagues from the state police, this would mean that the town would be policed by a force of part-time strangers with no ties or knowledge of the community or its citizens, and which significantly dilutes community control and accountability in the department. Tragically, this philosophical and organizational approach would effectively scrap Chief Bob Craig's highly successful community policing philosophy, which, like Chief Craig, has served this community and department so long and so well, for over twenty-five years. And as far as the board patrol, they cannot come into this village either. While it's been suggested that they could be employed and has, on occasion, assumed a support role in policing the village, it must be remembered that the U.S. Board Patrol is a federal law enforcement authority, a statutory authority over only federal offenses, and that when acting on state offenses outside of the authority, there's no more authority than the ordinary citizen. While it may be argued, the New York State law grants U.S. Board Patrol agents peace officer status the supremacy clause of the United States Constitution, which is a controlling authority in this matter, prohibits the state from imposing duties on federal officials. My concern relative to the rejection or abolition of the police department are as follows. Higher response times to police emergency calls. The state police have only one vehicle on patrol in the area from Ellenburg Depot to Ross's Point between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. While Ellenburg Depot is almost thirty miles from Ross's Point, response times climb even higher in bad weather, or if the one assigned vehicle has been diverted to another call outside their area of responsibility. Ross's Point is a border town with a border crossing and other points between the established border crossings where anyone can enter the village at any hour of the day or night and do whatever they wish. It should be noted that just this past December, four Canadian felons coming from Chez Diane Barre were arrested at the 276 border crossing at 3:00 AM, carrying a cracked cocaine and a fully-loaded sawed-off shotgun. The abolition of the police department puts the village residents at greater risk of push-in burglaries and significantly increases the risk of victimizing our senior citizens. A few, the few businesses left in downtown will become highly vulnerable and soft targets for burglars and vandals, as will the many village residences. Because of last departure from Ross's Point, property values are already at risk, and the abolition of the police department will further erode property values. The abolition of the police department will result in a reclassification of risk insurance companies, leading to increased residential and business insurance premiums. So, these are things that we really need to take into consideration, and I hear all these people are resigned, and I would like to know why. Why are all these resignations here tonight?
I can't answer that, because I don't know. I don't know. Resignations came in at five, five p.m. And, Sandy, I can't, I just don't have an answer for it. I just don't know.
I just want to say one thing straight. We're not trying to get rid of the police force. I mean, you say you're, where do you get these rumors from, Sandy?
Well, okay, I'm down to Ross's Point.
Right, I realize that.
You know, and for many years, like the ten and a half years I was at the Ross's Point village office, you keep your mouth shut from things, it's not, that's none of your business. But, right now, I think, right now, we're headed in the right direction. We have a good working theme. Village has got a good working theme. These rumors, as soon as, if you're an employee, as soon as you start hearing these rumors, you're scared, you have families, and you think, you know, okay, it's bad enough here now, so I think I'm going to just leave, you know. This, nobody can be harassed and their jobs are intimidated in any way, and we're interrogated. However, we are all civil here, and it's important that people can do the best they can performing their jobs. All I'm saying is, I'm seeing, who else is going to be resigning in this village, you know, that's, that's got us going in the right direction finally? That's, that's all I'm asking. And it's nothing against Mr. Burks, it's just that these are rumors that came to me, and I'm questioning them.
Well, and I think, I think you're in exactly the right place to be questioning them, Sandy, and I guess it's what I would offer to anyone else who's down there listening. If there is a rumor around the community, call a board member. Certainly, if someone calls me and I don't know, I will try to find out for them, and I, I would hope that the rest of us would as well. I think you're doing the right thing, because maybe some of them are just in fact rumors. And the best thing to do with those is to try to get your answers as soon as you can, and I think you would agree with it.
Okay. Is, was there an audit done on employees' files?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Not to my knowledge.
There's no, there's no, um, no audit done, no, no checking of people's files to question?
All those files, I believe, are in the clerk's office, and they're in a safe place.
Being, being checked to see if they were working overtime or losing?
Not can I know of, Sandy. Phil?
I can't, I'm not aware of anything personally. I don't know if treasure is-
Just like I said, you know, rumors. And I just want to make sure the village-
Again, rumors are rumors, and this is the place to come to get them said.
Absolutely. And I just want to make sure that, you know, our, our village works, you know, together, and we're working all for one, one purpose here, not, not for one per, one person, it's, it's the, the, the whole community.
Sandy, I'd like to say something, if I'm right. You're right, I wasn't elected to this position out of the point. And as a new trustee, I have a big interest in this village, because I've been here most of my life. I'm not originally from Ross's Point, I'm from Little Hamlet down the road called Cooperville. But I do have a great interest here, and I spent most of my career in law enforcement, thirty-two and a half years of it. I came to the village, I asked questions because I wasn't sure, and I ask these people daily for guidance. Now, if people are leaving or resigning, it's not because I'm sitting on the board. Aaron Lefebvre had all the intentions to go to the sheriff's department before I showed up. Okay? The rumor of the state police coming in, Bob and I talked about this quite a bit in the last couple of weeks. The last thing that I would want is for the state police to have a subseat in the village of Ross's Point. And there's a lot of reasons for that, which I won't go into. But, it surprises me, it doesn't surprise me, but I know that Bob reached a point in his career, just like I did, that it's time to do something else besides law enforcement. And we're losing a great guy, a lot of expertise, especially for this village. And I even offered, and something that we'll discuss later, is if he can't come back as a police administrator, for the amount of time that he'd be allowed to as a retired police officer, to keep the continuity, to keep a guy like Tom Longyear, who I have a lot of respect for. Those kind of people make this village. You know, you and me and everybody else here, we have a great, every employee in this village that I've seen are dedicated people. I don't want to see anybody laid off, parted, or resigned. I have a question, and I, I repeatedly said this, I, if I upset somebody in the way that I speak to them, I apologize. And I've apologized many times, because over the years that I talk to people, maybe I do have a tone of interrogation, but I just need an answer. And when I, when somebody asks me on the street, what about this and what about that, I'd like to give them an answer. It might not be the answer that they'd like to hear, but I'd like to say, I'm in, with the rest of the village board, sit, we discuss, we discuss a lot of things in executive meetings that we, you know, sometimes we don't agree on, but we, we do agree on one thing when we're finished. We're still friends, and we've made, three or, out of five of us, there's come, you know, we've come to a conclusion in the three over the five rule. And I'm sorry that you're hearing these rumors, but it's not my intention of, and we have, the other thing that we have to realize too in this village is that we have a lot of law enforcement personnel that live in every single street, regardless if they're border patrol, customs people, retired troopers, you know, customs and border protection people. There's a lot of people here, and yes, there's a lot of stuff that goes through this little village, you know, daily. Things that we're not even aware of, but we're well protected. And we're not going to lose, we're going to continue our, our part-time as, as long as we can. If we can't get them, if they, if, at the end, the people from the sheriff's department don't want to come in and work for us, I, I've contacted this chief of police in the city of Plasberg, guys like Steve Doobie, who used to be resident here in the village, a police officer, he could be coming here to work part-time. I mean, these are the kinds of people that, you know, we, we want these, we need them. We need an active patrol, so, you know, I'm, I'm just as heartless as you are that Bob's leaving. But, you know, I mean, rumor is rumor. I mean, anytime, at any time, if I walk in your restaurant and you want to ask me a question, if I can't answer, I'll go find, I'll try to go find the answer.
Well, I, I think, like with Aaron Lefebvre.
Can I interrupt you, please, Sandy? You've got to understand one thing here. And Aaron is a guy that's not there anymore tonight than me. But when it comes to dollars to cents, this village can't afford to pay the salaries that other agencies pay. You know, we, we sent, we sent a man to, out to Rochester to school, and we spent twelve, fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars training him, and they're around and he left them. For a higher paid job, you can't hate him for that.
Oh, absolutely not.
And that's what happened with Aaron. He went to a higher paid job.
If I could, if I could interject just a minute, maybe to ease Sandy's mind a little more than anybody else, who may be curious. Aaron and I worked together for nine years. We had Aaron here as, as a police officer for nine years. When Wyeth announced they were closing, there were a lot of rumors that went around. There was rumors of possible layoffs coming. There were rumors of, of downsizing, and right away, Aaron got concerned. He's in a twenty-year retirement plan. He's got nine years into it. He needs eleven more to make his retirement. He and I spoke about this at length. The last thing I wanted to see was Aaron leave.
A lot of money invested in him.
Exactly. And the thing of it was, is, when you're in a police agency and you're looking to do what they call a lateral transfer, it's a lateral transfer from one agency to another. First of all, you've got to have the agency that you're looking at going into have an opening. Secondly, you've got to do an interview like anyone else and be accepted and want to be hired by that agency. And you've got, the timing has to be right. So, when Aaron and I discussed this, we came to the conclusion that, well, if two years down the road, three years down the road, Wyeth gradually goes down and goes away, and nothing replaces it, and the village is looking at downsizing, he was concerned that maybe his position would be one that would be, would be, come up for, for termination, it would be, it would be taken from the budget. If he would have waited the couple of years and tried to wait it out, and then all of a sudden, he says, okay, now I got to try to get in somewhere, and there were no openings, and the only two agencies around here that he could really do a lateral transfer to and stay within, and still live in Ross's Point, and still, still maintain his residency here, was the city police or the sheriff's department. Right now, the city police has retirements, but they're not backfilling their retire, retirements. They're, they're, they don't have any openings. It just happened that the sheriff's department had just had a retirement. He just had a guy that had his twenty years in there, twenty-two years, whatever it was, he put in for his retirement, so that left an opening. So, again, Aaron fought, fought hard with this, as far as trying to make this decision. He didn't want to leave. He loved it here. He didn't want to leave. But, he also had to consider his family and consider his, his retirement, and he can do a lateral transfer to that agency. He did the interview, I talked with the sheriff, he, he did the interview with the sheriff. He's worked with all of them in, in, in joint projects, so he knows the department, he knew the other officers, he felt comfortable going in there, so he chose to do it. And it, lucky for him, the opening was there, he was able to do it, and he was, he was here nine years, and he transferred into that agency, actually making a little more money, starting off in that agency than he was making here after nine years, because like the mayor said, the larger agencies can afford to pay more. But he didn't, he didn't want to leave. It was, it was a decision that was, that was prompted by the, by the closing or the-
The rumors.
The rumors, or the notice of closing of Wyeth, and-
The rumors.
But again, if you get down to, you get down to, if he would have waited the two or three years, and it didn't happen for him, and there was no openings to get into, and let's say he would have been laid off, that position would have been abolished, and he would have been laid off, you can't do a lateral transfer from an unemployment line. You have to be actively working in an agency, and then lateral to the other agency.
Well, I think, that's what I said, but I think it was because there were so many, you know, it's been so iffy with, are we going to keep this village, you know, police department or not, you know?
Never been attended as board member at the police department. Never been attended. We didn't, we didn't eliminate positions.
Somehow, somehow, they heard the rumors. I mean, they felt their jobs were, you know, were at risk.
We didn't eliminate any positions. We chose not to fill it, but we didn't eliminate them.
Well, maybe, maybe people went in one day and said, possibly, you know, I think we're, we're thinking about, you know, doing whatever the police department, then the next day, oh gee, well, we won't, we won't keep them. And, and I, and I think this is kind of what I was hearing, is that nobody knew for sure what was going on, and so they, they chose to leave.
Right, but just, just know, Sandy, as a board, we have not ever discussed eliminating the police force. Because I was asked that, actually, it was either November or December when I was at the gas station in Vermont, is Ross's point going to eliminate the police force, and I said, not that I'm aware of it. We've not ever discussed it. And I think, you know, I think with, I think that in October, when we got the word on Wyeth, I think a lot of people were really shaken by that, and rightfully so. And as a result, you get, you, you start worrying about cutting your costs in other areas, such as at the water plant, and looking at your budget overall, and looking at the financial situation that the village is going to be in.
Well, I, what I think, Kelly, is I think they, they heard all these rumors, and then John Burks comes on, John comes on, and then it's like, okay, this is, this is going to happen. This is going to happen because all the rumors started floating around about the police department coming into the village, and that, that's what John was going to see that the police were going, the state police were going to be. And this is what I say, this is why I'm here. I'm, I'm here to find out. And, and I don't want to see, like I said, I don't want to see the village going in the same, oh, take the same road it took years ago when we didn't have an administrator and our police department. And it's just like you're hearing all kinds of things trickle down, we're going to lose this, we're going to lose this, and then we're right back to where we were. And no matter what, with Phil leaving, we need an administrator in this village. It cannot be run by, you know, a village employee in the office, you know, as secretary, and, and a public works department, department, so, person. That cannot, I don't, I don't want to see that happen. So, so that's what I'm saying. These are, these are all my concerns, and that's what it's based on, rumors, and, and I want to find out, you know.
I don't know, but we want to advertise.
Well, has, has the board asked Phil to stay on to?
Phil is not going to stay on. Simple as that. Not that we didn't ask him.
I just think that I really hate to lose him.
Well, so, okay, he's got right here, just would like to see him stay here.
Well, Phil, did, did they ask you?
He knows that.
Mayor asked me.
Mm-hmm. Just the mayor asked you?
Mayor, and Kelly.
Well, a man makes a, Kelly, a man who definitely makes a decision to resign and accept another position, that's an indication. We can ask him all we want, but if he wants to stay- We can ask him all we want, but if he wants to stay, he wants, he's going to go to another position.
Well, I just assumed that he was, he was happy, so, you know, it just kind of, it kind of bothered me when somebody just takes up and leaves, you know. But like I said, I saw it happen before, and I know why the other three administrators left. I, I, I do, I know what went on. So, I just don't want to see that happen again in the village.
Anybody else? If not, I have a motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just share a couple of little things that the Historical Society is trying to do to help the village of Ross's Point, get out in the public view and stuff. The Laxton Labs think that Melissa is going to, they're writing charts of book, I think, about tourism. Donna is going, but there's, the Historical Society is also showing some representation that they would. I've been to two of them, Erasko's been to one, and we intend to continue to go, so that they know that Ross's Point is interested in what they're doing. Another thing that we are going to do, April, May, and June, we're going to have a display of historical pictures from Ross's Point and the government center. Not in the showcase when you walk in, but in the D and B office, there's apparently a list of four or something, there's, I have to go check it out, cases where we can put pictures, and we've already selected forty-five pictures, and so it gets, gets us a little bit more out and, you know, and funnier.
Very good.
So, good job.
Thank you. Anybody else? I can take a motion for adjournment?
I just have one question. Were you, did we answer your question though about the actual memo about your faucets and everything or not? Well, I just wanted to make sure that the next letter was precise, because I know there's a lot of people worried, you know, there's senior citizens and unhandy people, and I was, Phil and I were actually discussing that earlier, and I guess what I feel is that if they put something together that I could follow, then the village would probably be okay, because you know what? I have no idea either, and since I moved into my house, which will be five years in August, I've never once done whatever it is with my hot water heater that I'm supposed to do, no, not even once, so, hopefully it'll be understandable.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Motion for adjournment?
Second.
Second, all in the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eight-thirty-three. Thank you people for coming. Yes, thank you very much, and don't forget to vote tomorrow.